My pleasure, my pleasure. I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the dear Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why do I have to ask you? You can have it.
Make a motion on that, just like that.
Why don't you do, why don't you go down your list and ask the board for a motion, put UGI before the next use.
Okay. Take a motion to put UGI first and change the order here so that we can get it going.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Jason, do your minutes first, do your minutes first.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written from whatever date this was.
What did you say?
Two of them, the workshop minutes and then there's also the.
You have two seconds.
The workshop minutes and the minutes of the last meeting. Accept them as the written.
I wasn't here, so.
Yes, for a second.
Second?
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
That's for both seven, both seven. Well, it looks to me like after speaking with Tony that they had just gotten information for UGI, so they really haven't gone anywhere with it yet.
I know Jason's here.
Yeah, he's here.
I consulted.
How's Mr. UGI today?
Hi. How are you?
Wonderful.
Just a quick update, we just received the comment letters from the Pike County Office of Community Planning as well as the Township Engineers letters about Friday last week, so it can give us enough time to revise the plans for this meeting. We also have not heard back from PennDOT yet, and we just found out that we need to make the submission to the County Constellation District, so we're gonna make that submission this week.
Basically, so you want to get all your ducks in a row before you resituate the plans?
Correct.
Outstanding.
Okay. We did take a look at some of your comments from last month, as far as reorganizing, resettuating the underground bed, we can make that work, to allow the alternate to be right next to the existing one. And, I mean, that's, that was really the major comment that came out of the meeting last month, so it's not an issue. You'll see that on the revised plans.
So we're gonna get the plans all squared away and anybody else have any issues at hand?
Yeah, so there's no problem with the extension.
Uh, no, there's no problem. We'll get that.
Yeah, actually, if you could, if you could get a letter from, from the applicant, signed by the, on your behalf, on behalf of the applicant, just indicating that you're granting a general extension of the plan.
Sure. Is there a specific timeline for that extra month?
I would just make it a general extension until we have an opportunity to review it. There, just for, for the board, there were, Lou Coz, I spoke to Lou today, and Lou did send out a letter on Friday, the 20th. He did, there were 19 numbered items from both the zoning and subdivision land development ordinance that need to be addressed on the plans, so as Jeffrey indicated, he just got the letter privately, as I did, and so he hasn't had an opportunity to do that. So if you could address that letter to the Secretary of the Plan Commission and just indicate that you're granting a general extension for consideration of the project.
No problem.
Anything else?
I believe you're free to go.
All right.
The person that would.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you again.
Thanks for taking that long ride.
All right, so reorganization, are we just gonna wait on that? Figure out the works. Yeah, let's wait.
I want you to make a motion to table it.
All right, so we're gonna make a motion to table it.
I'll second that.
As far as members.
Oh, okay. We get the supervisors here as a different member.
Right. And we'd want to give another.
Probably.
Yeah.
I'll give some of you.
Second?
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
And the last thing we have on our agenda here is the mixed usage word, which everybody has in front of them.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I wasn't at the workshop, but I did review the minutes, but it doesn't. All that's in the minutes is, looks like a question and answer type thing, so I wasn't sure if the board had an opportunity to review it or not, so did everybody have a chance to look at it?
What were we talking about, or did question and answer, Tony, was we reviewed the comments from the county, and we reviewed the changes made, and it seems like the only change made was really on the definition, and we, since we weren't part of the meeting, we had no idea where everything went.
All right. I can, I can fill you in on that. We went through on the July 24, 2019 letter, I met with Mr. Seacrest, the former chair, Brian Snyder from Office of Community Planning, Mike Rosinski, who was the Director of the Office of Community Planning for Pike County, and Attorney Farley. And we went through each of the items, they explained exactly what they meant by each of the comments, starting with comment one, that has been changed, 409.4 was changed to include subdivision land development ordinance, 409.6 with respect to the minimum setback between uses, there was a vast discussion regarding that, and what they were really looking for was the language that was added in the last sentence of 409.6, they wanted it an objective point of measurement. So what was suggested was that the minimum setback of the multifamily structures from the non-residential structures shall be 200 feet as measured from the corner of the closest non-residential use to the nearest multifamily structure. And that's, that whole comment, really what they're asking for is where the measurement starts from, and so that was put in there to deal with that. Actually, kind of their suggestion. The next comment, they asked to consider increasing the minimum standards for access road through the development from minor to collector, that would require us to change the subdivision of land development ordinance, and I don't believe that that's being recommended at this time. That's something that you may want to consider in the future, as to whether your current subdivision of land development ordinance needs to be revised to deal with cluster developments, conservation use developments, so that there is a classification that we currently use for minor and collective streets. And I think that the suggestion was, if you're gonna have a large number of units, you might want to consider changing it from minor to collective. 409.2D3 was removed, as per the comment, 409.4A, the dwelling unit building was changed back to multifamily building. The next comment is a note needs to be added under 414.4 about the permitted lot coverage on contiguous acreage. That note was added under the table for 414.4, and that note reads permitted coverage is applicable to contiguous acreage, again, at the suggestion of County Planning. The next item was consider scaling the permitted lot coverage for mixed usage, and 414.4, and the comment was the result of them looking at our existing ordinance, and Community Planning looked at it and said, well, you already have a sliding scale for lot coverage, so why don't you just continue it for this? And that sliding scale was put in for mixed usage, 20-plus acres, the permitted lot coverage was 65 percent, minimum yard 100 feet, and that corresponds to what we presently have in our ordinance, and the 21 to 50, and here's one of the changes that I noticed tonight. In the box where it says mixed usage, it should read 21 to 50-plus acres, 50 percent permitted lot coverage, minimum yards, setbacks 150 feet. How that didn't get in there, I don't know, and of course, I wasn't at the workshop, so I didn't see it, but that should be 50-plus. And again, that was suggested by the Office of Community Planning. There was, they asked us to consider the minimum setback distance from steep slopes, that's not addressed in, in the amendment, because the steep slope provision is not being amended, so we're gonna go with what presently is in the ordinance. That was the other comment. The general comment from Pike County Community Planning was, we have nine pages, what are the changes and what aren't the changes? And of course, the response was that it's the bold-faced items that are being changed, but they, they wanted just what was being changed in these ordinance, so that's why the new version, instead of being nine pages, is five. That's why there's a lot less pages, because we didn't repeat what's presently in the ordinance. And that again was their suggestion. They requested a change under the definition of contiguous acreage, and their suggested change was for the following, and that is lands contained within legal boundaries of any adjoining municipality, and that change was made on the last sentence of the definition of contiguous. So that was taken word for word and put into the amendment. The next bullet point in the July 24, 2019 letter was probably the majority of the discussion at the meeting. They did not like the, and I say they, I mean the Office of Community Planning, did not like the extremely long definition of mixed use, and if, as you might recall, that definition was kind of tailored based on comments from the zoning officer and myself, as well as a public comment that was taken in. They didn't like that, they wanted it simplified, in fact, the suggestion was, why don't you just leave the first two sentences and we would be fine with that? And so that's what we did. So mixed use is now streamlined definition as a parcel containing residential in addition to non-residential uses permitted in the development district, a building which contains dwellings located above the ground floor of an institutional, civic, office, commercial, or retail use. Again, their suggestion was to streamline it for those two sentences, and that's what we did in the revised amendment. Next comment was height of the highest adjoining structure needs to be changed to height of adjacent structures, that's under section 409.4F, and if you look at the bottom of page two, that word, adjoining, was changed to adjacent. The next comment under the bullet points was, in the schedule of development standards, the term 65 percent per 4.14 needs to be changed to 65 percent used for 414.4, that was indeed changed, however, if you look at page five, it was still typed incorrectly. So if you go to page five, which is the table of development standards for development district, in the far right column, under development standards, at the bottom, it says residential and non-residential uses, 65 percent use per 4.414, that is incorrect, it should be 414.4. So that change needs to be made, again, it's a number change, and it's the same error that was in the last one, so it's a typographical error. So can you change it on your copies, because that's the one that should be done, 414.4. Next bullet point in the July 24 letter was, they wanted 409.6, they wanted the term in review usage for compatibility to be removed. There was some discussion regarding that, because 409.6 is the section that deals with non-residential use, which allows for the Board of Supervisors to impose conditions upon the uses, and it was added, the section was added, and also to review usage for compatibility with other uses. The Planning Commission requested, the County Planning Commission requested that that language be removed, and it was removed. So if you look, it now reads, misused development, non-residential uses shall be conditional use in D D zone, which shall be subject to review by the Board of Supervisors, who shall impose reasonable conditions upon the uses. So that additional phrase, and review the usage for compatibility, was taken out per Community Planning's letter. Finally, the last bullet point was 409.4D, states that a multifamily development can only be served by one access from any public highway unless there's a safety. Needs to be clarified that this restriction includes non-residential uses, or if they can have a separate access. This, this probably was the second most discussed term during our meeting, and after, after going back and forth with Mr. Snyder, Mr. Rosinski, and Mr. Farley, myself, and Mr. Seacrest, it was decided that the first sentence of 409.4D would stay the same, which says that no multifamily development shall be served by more than one access from any public highway unless topographic or other physical circumstances dictate the use of more than one access for safety reasons. The suggested language from the Office of Community Planning is now shown in the second sentence, and that is any multifamily development or multi-use which fronts on a public highway will be subject to the terms of a Pennsylvania highway occupancy permit. And again, that change was a change suggested by the people from Community Planning, and I don't have, didn't have any objection that morning to the change, nor do I have the objection now, because any, anytime it fronts on a public highway, it's gonna basically be, that's maybe anyway. So our ordinance is a little wishy-washy about that, the only word I can come up with is wishy-washy, because the present ordinance kind of says that the supervisors might be able to impose as a condition another access, but if it's on a public highway, it's gonna be.
Well, that was, yeah, but that was something we discussed at the meeting about having a service entrance inside the, inside the entrance.
Inside, after.
After the entrance.
After the entrance, right.
Right.
Okay. And so that's still there, okay, that's, so the first sentence was left, and then the second, the second sentence was basically that it's subject to a highway occupancy permit. So those are all the bullet points that were in the July 24, 2019 letter, and the changes that were made. As I said, there were two typographical errors that I found, I did not look at it in total, because the two typographical errors I found were, page four, were under mixed use, the 21 to 50 line under lot area should be 21 to 50-plus, and on the table of development standards on page five, again, for the third time, it has the wrong reference, it should be 414.1, not 4.414.
414.1 or 414.4?
414.4, yes, it's like the third time that that's gotten into that way. So those are, those are basically the county comments and how they were addressed, and I will let you now discuss it.
All right, under the coverage, permitted lot coverage, we still, since everything's not in here, we still allow the supervisors to make a judgment call for 75 percent, right?
Correct.
Okay. We've, we've, we've done calls, yes. The, I'm assuming it's still the same in the ordinance, just wasn't shown on here.
Yes. Yeah, what we tried to do is we tried to take just, at the Office of Community Planning's request, anything that wasn't being changed, they wanted out, so we took that, we tried to take it all out, so it shortens it up for the review. That was one of their primary complaints, that we left all that stuff together, and they weren't sure what they were reviewing. Anyone else?
Tony, I got a question, 409.6.
Yep.
The change in the language that says the minimum setback of a multifamily structure from non-residential structures.
Yes.
Based on our ordinance, a structure can be a dumpster, a fence around it. Should we, should we make that the principal structure? Actually, from the, the actual building itself, and not in an ornament, because our, our structure definition includes ornamentation-type structures. So if they have something in the far rear yard that's five by six, that 200 foot can technically be made, or that 100 feet can technically be made from there, 200. I just don't want.
So change the word, change the word.
Would it, would it, just change it to occupied structures? Does that eliminate all storage structures and?
Through principal structure, because anything other than that is unnecessary.
So Sean, your comment.
Yeah, we don't have a building in the land.
Sean, would it be, would it be fair to say that this would be?
I'm just.
Okay.
I just want to make sure there's no, somebody can't challenge that if someone comes in with a.
Okay, so you're saying that a structure under the ordinance.
Says a combination of materials to form a construction for use, occupancy, or ornamentation, whether installed on, above, or below the surface of land or water.
Didn't we just add like non-residential occupied structures?
You can do occupied, or you can do principal.
Or, or we could call it a prin, or we could call it a building, because a building.
That has a different definition.
Yes, a building in which has conducted the main and principal use of the lot, and we're said building a situated. You can use the term principal building, but I think that's gonna confuse them. Minimum setback of multifamily buildings from non-residential buildings shall be 200 feet as measured, okay, why don't we use the term building back?
I think that's better.
Yep.
Non-residential structure, change structure to building.
Okay. So each time, there's three times in, in 409.6 that the term structure is used, let's use the term building instead, because as Sean points out, the way our definition of structure is, is you can have a garbage shed, and it's considered a structure.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure it's clear.
So should we, the minimum setback from.
Multifamily buildings.
All multifamily building from non-residential building.
Buildings.
Shall be 200 feet as measured from the center of the closest non-residential.
No, from the corner, from the corner of the closest non-residential to the nearest multifamily.
Multifamily building.
Yeah.
We'll just have to check and see what, how many times it repeats in the ordinance that we don't have in front of us.
Because I'm sure every time we do that measurement line, it probably says from the center of, instead of from the corner of. But again, that was a suggestion from, from Community Planning, and it was, I, I think it's a good suggestion, because you could conceivably have, you know, measurements taken from the center of buildings that would be 400 feet away, instead of 200, from the corner, depending on how you determine building. Sean, the only other thing that I grappled with, and that I wanted some input from you, was the L on page three. I noticed that the language, we all agreed, multifamily dwelling shall be subject to review by the Board as a conditional use, and the Board shall be allowed to place conditions upon multifamily develop, this is not a comment from the county, this is my comment, allowing for additional access for emergency management systems and fire service. My understanding, at the time we were talking about that, was what Bob DiLorenzo mentioned before, was that if necessary, after your highway permit road comes in, you can have, you can require a service road for emergency vehicles. Because it doesn't, it doesn't really read that way, it's saying we can require a second road.
Right.
But I think.
Oh, it depends on the application.
Right. So are we all on the same page on that?
Something similar to what Lowe's asks.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, exactly, that's what.
Off the highway.
Some of the, because if you're gonna have shopping, you gotta figure there's gonna be people coming in and out, and if you got an emergency, let's say, in dwellings behind it, you want to be able to surpass that.
Yeah, you want to get right around it.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be like a service road that's open to the public, it would just be access.
Yeah.
Access, just for, yeah, fire access.
So leave, leave the language as additional access for emergency systems and fire services. Leave it that way, okay.
Yeah, Tony, if I'm, if I rack my brain hard enough, I think, when they did the Heritage Point in Westfall, the fire code required them to have a fire access road on the Home Depot side, because it'd be, yeah, so fire trucks could get on that side of the building.
Oh, so we look back.
And it stays clear.
Okay.
So, they had to have a surface bound that was strong enough to hold a fire truck.
I'm sure the fire department.
I just didn't want, I, I just didn't want to get into any problems with PennDOT, because I don't want PennDOT coming back and saying, you guys don't have any authority to do this.
You literally have no segments, it's off the main highway.
And let's get off the main highway, the service road.
Because most, most of the HLPs only go in, I think it's 20 or 25 feet, and after that point, because they want it straight.
Right. Because I had that direction.
Yeah. After 25 feet, you gotta put a service access road in for emergency, you could.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing with that, but I do need to bring something up. I got a call from supervisor lawyers, and it's about the, it was about the ordinance, and I'll just quickly go over it. She asked if there were any type of ordinances out there that related to this, and what it would be to open it up to the entire DD district, even if city sort of didn't come in, to have it with some septic systems. So basically, on short notice, I came up with this, and she asked me to bring it up at the meeting tonight. I was looking at the Unified Development Ordinance based on EEP, and North Carolina used it in their ordinance for mixed use. And if we're gonna look at something like this, it would take some time, because it's a lengthy, it's a lengthy ordinance. But the ordinance has suggestions in it for land development, character preservation, safety and services, and service types of development, rather. Although it's in the city of North Carolina, much of what is presented could be usable. We should consider opening mixed use to all properties in the commercial districts scaled by size of property based on square foot of property that would be compatible with handling the runoff, septic, or central sewage, recreation areas, and sensible parking facilities. We might also wanna consider conservation design, allowing for more condensed areas of dwellings in return for open space. The dwelling area plus the percent of open space should equal the amount of square footage proposed for each dwelling unit. And we might also wanna consider looking at impact fees where any development causes a higher amount of services or alterations needed at any township expense would be the burden of the, the burden not placed on the taxpayers. So this is the idea that she had in mind, and wanted to know if we would take a look at it anyway. Does anybody have any other thoughts on any other standard we've had?
Well, if you knew, the max cap is based on municipals. If they had to put in their own central sewage system, it would obviously cut down that cap drastically, I would imagine.
You mean their own online?
Right.
Oh, of course. Septic would always dictate how much you'd have.
I mean, we already know you have access to central water almost out, if not to, the Westfall property line, where the water is right out here with us. It's multiple borough water, it's already ran along all the way out through last year, right, in the impasse. So obviously, if they had put in a central septic system, it would have to cut down what they.
Well, that's, yeah, but she's asking, can we take a look at it so that it could, mixed use could be used whether central sewage came in or not, on smaller scales.
Well, that'd be, that's what I just.
Well, yeah, but not by ordinance, the way the ordinance reads it. It's only if you have 20 acres or more, because there's no mixed use other, other in, other mixed use definition in order.
So you're saying like a smaller property?
Yeah.
Be included?
Yeah.
Residential waters.
Even if they had one lot, they might be able to have one store and an apartment above it.
There it is.
Which, there's some of that out there already.
Well, I think, considering that, just my off-the-cuff comment, considering that, I think most of the comments that I've heard, both at these meetings and the supervisors' meetings, deal with concerns for density.
Right.
I think allowing mixed use in an even smaller lot would probably.
Well, that's what, I mean, I just use that as an example, because it's, like I said, dictate, or just what could be on the lot and go by septic runoff.
Understood, understood, and.
And it would, you know, you'd have to come up with a decent.
And theoretically, even though you don't have a mixed use in the DD zone, you're already limited by virtue of the development standards to what you can do, as was demonstrated when they brought their sketch plan in.
Right.
A couple years ago. Pretty limited what you can do.
What about the impact fees?
That's something that I was talking about earlier, so.
One.
If this comes to light.
Tony, that would go in the subdivision, right?
Yeah.
Or subdivision landmark?
Yeah, it would go in the Saldo.
That would go in the Saldo.
And just so that we're apples to apples, I just, without going through it, there are provisions now in the Saldo for multifamily dwellings and cluster development. It's 609 and 610, there are provisions that are already in there, which would require land developers to comply with Section 409, which is one that we basically use all the time. But I'll be the first to say that the subdivision land development ordinance that I'm looking at, which I believe is last amended on November 2nd, 1987, and is probably in need of having a look at. And I think Mr. Bowles and I have discussed this at prior planning commission meetings, prior supervisors' meetings, and so we probably should start looking at some provision for conservation development, which really is not called for in the Saldo. But, you know, really has nothing to do with what's in front of us, so.
Two subdivisions.
Yeah, I mean, the subdivision land.
I don't think they'd consider, I still think the impact fees, if these things cause services to have to go up.
Well, you're limited, though, in what you can charge impact fees.
Well, why should the taxpayers pay for it?
I agree 100%, but you're statutorily limited.
Yeah. But we didn't even look at it, that's my point.
This is gonna propose a lot, especially by fire departments. So, but the issue you have is somebody who wants to build a million dollar complex, fire department wants a $750,000 fire truck. So I, that's what Tony's saying, there's a limit there, but I agree with you that being a volunteer for many years, that there should be some type of impact fee, especially when it comes to, oh, the township doesn't have a park.
Well, that was another.
So, another thing that we.
As I read in there, if we broke it down to amount of property per unit, that would include recreation areas, which on the overall, it would have a recreational area for all the apartments by so much square footage for each unit.
Correct.
But if they went to a conservation bill, that would be, let's, just for example, and I quote the numbers, if it was a quarter acre per unit, and we allowed a conservation bill, an eighth of an acre per unit, the other eighth of an acre would have to get added to the open space.
For closing.
For closing.
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 That's how it's typically done, yes.
I mean, this is something I was asked to bring up, and it's something that I wanted to look at anyway. Any thoughts on?
Well, you know, I'm thinking that if the impact fees were feasible, I mean, like I've only been hearing a little bit about it, you know, and researched a little bit about it, and it just, I think it'd be good if the taxpayers were affected by it. Why should they have to go ahead and pay for it if somebody else is in here making a profit or whatever? We shouldn't fund their profit. But that's all, I was just wondering about it.
Tony, can you correct me, I'm trying not to be disrespectful in any way, but doesn't the MPC say that the planning commission can review something when it's passed along by the board of supervisors? It's not something like one supervisor can request us to do, it has to be agreed upon every supervisor since I've established. But then we dedicate time and, I think, does any cost involved?
I think this, I think it was suggested that it be brought up and discussed. I mean, the board of supervisors can only act as a board.
Just don't wanna overstep and start looking into something that maybe two others don't agree with, or maybe all of them agree with.
I don't know.
Bringing it up so people can think about it, and so if they wanna make the.
That's why I said, don't make this, but follow the letter of the law. MPC says it gets passed along to the thing, question, public board of supervisors.
We can't take an accent on it, I understand that.
Now, the other issue that I think you get into, maybe you talk about conservation development, cluster development, is requirements for open space. Because once you get into, into your requirements for open space, that's basically your active or passive recreation. So you can't force them to do open space and then collect the impact fee. You can't, it's one or the other, you can't have both. You can't, you can't have, you can't be two.
Well, this is what I'm saying, it was never reviewed.
Right.
We've never gone over it. It's something that I think we should have looked at. But also with the open space, there's a lot involved in open space.
Right.
Moon Valley Falls, their open space is on the side of a hill.
Exactly, exactly. And I can think of one condo development, I can think of one condo development in the township in which I live, where there's 18 acres of open space, and the 18 acres is on top of a mountain that nobody's ever been to the top of.
I mean, it would have to be, it would have, if we went to an open space, I think it would have to be open space.
Has to be available for active or passive recreation.
Right.
Otherwise, they have to, they would have to pay.
So there's a whole school of stuff there. Free one? I mean, I just brought it up for people to think about if they want. Mr. Clark's here from the supervisors, if he thinks there's anything in here, if he'd like us to review, we can bring it up at their meeting.
Yeah, we have the definition of open space.
Yep.
So, actually, we have two.
Yeah, I know, there's one each.
Well, we want to, we have to finish this out.
I'll do it when I, when I got it.
Well, since all the changes are made in here, and later we looked it over, we do have these couple typos that need to be fixed. I'd like to make a motion to approve this and pass it back to the supervisors.
For corrections.
After the correction.
Well, I think, I think just a point, a point of order, you have to set, once the corrections are ready, you have to set it back to county planning. Okay. Okay. County planning.
Make the most of due directions.
Okay. So what you're basically doing is you're approving the document to go back out for review to county planning.
Make a motion to send it to county planning? Pass the corrections after the correction. I'll send it out. All right. Public participation. Your first.
Tom from Millford Borough, I previously asked about a sign on the property, whether they had a permit for it that was advertising mixed use coming soon, and Mr. Nagado was getting conferred with Mr. Bowles to go to forth with an officer whether there was a permit for that and whether.
My recollection, Tom, was that I asked you to contact Mr. Bowles.
I brought it up at the last meeting, and Ms. Lourds said that the supervisors would.
And you also, Mr. Guy, you're on your behalf, brought it up at the Millford Borough office with me, and I told him to fill out a record request form, which was going for his.
I'm just staying with my shot.
That's what was said.
Okay.
You can go back and watch.
You can watch the tape too. I know what I said, I asked you to contact Mr. Bowles from the other side.
Yeah, Bill, Millford Borough, I just need a clarification on the mixed use here. There's setbacks between the residential and the commercial, is that correct? But somebody's gotta explain the setting line, a building which contains dwellings, isn't a dwelling a place where somebody lives? Located above the ground floor of an institutional civic office, commercial or retail, does that mean there can be residential on top of the commercial?
Like you see in.
Yes.
Where there's apartments above businesses.
That's, that's what, there's two types of mixed use.
Been that way all along?
No, Millford Township ordinance didn't allow for any mixed use.
At some point it did, I think, many years ago.
The 1986 one did.
No, that one doesn't.
And since I've been here, none of it have.
I missed that.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of our, part of our issue, which I brought up at the last supervisors' meeting, that our ordinance doesn't provide for mixed use at all. It was actually prohibited.
So am I to believe, so, am I correct that Mrs. Lourds' suggestion that planning board review everything that is possible in changing the zoning?
No, see, she asked me to just give my opinion and on what she asked me, and that's what I came up with. And she asked me to bring it up at the meeting, because she wanted. In order for us to do anything, the supervisors would have to agree with it and send it back to us for review. We can't do it on our own.
Okay, so what's the purpose of bringing it up here?
To let people think about it, and that's all it's about.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, Fred, Millford Borough, who's the, you know the chairman of the town here?
Vice.
Vice. Will you stay as chairman, or you guys can vote on the chairman as a?
We tabled it for now, we're unsure how we're gonna move forward, we're gonna wait to see if we have more applicants.
I think we're actually, oh, I'm gonna interrupt you. I think we'd wanna actually try to wait for a fifth member after a supervisor who's gonna be advertising, because instead of like, why reorganize by if we get another person in, it would be more sense than.
Sure. So, great point by Mr. DiLorenzo, and I would like to have each of you guys answer what you think. Are you in favor of pushing this to the board of supervisors to have them review it and vote on it, or bring it back, sort of, if they can bring it back out to you guys to look at?
We can't do that.
You can't, so how's the process work?
It was just brought up, and it was brought up at our meeting, if these guys have any opinions, they're free on their own to voice their opinion.
Okay.
And if the supervisors feel there was anything, or even what I read, they'll just ask us to, we can't do it on our own.
So at the supervisors' meeting, we could, we could bring up this point, though, right? I mean.
We have to bring it up at the supervisors' meeting.
Tristan, I'd like to know that you, Pat McCarthy, and you Larry are not thinking that that would be important to look at, what was just suggested. You're just gonna go along with.
It's all a warrant.
No, it's, yeah, that's why he brought it up, so this way we can go ahead and look at it.
We can't look at it until the supervisor's sent.
So you're not, okay, that's the process.
Yeah. Right now, the ordinance with the corrections has to load by county planning, and then come back.
Because the only reason I'm confused is that you had said, I thought tonight, but correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe Mike Sullivan was gonna come, looking for the consulting on this, though.
I said?
Yeah. You had asked, yeah.
I had asked the supervisors as a resident, not a planning board member, to actually have an individual.
Yes. And that was encouraging, so I'm just asking what the process is.
To weigh in on the pros and cons, and apparently Mr. Sullivan, as we can all see, and was he's a ghost, is not here.
Right.
So.
Do you know if he was asked and didn't make it, or did that even?
I would hope they took the suggestion, I don't have any doubts that he may have been contacted, but I, you know, I can't answer for the supervisors, obviously, and I can't answer for Mr. Sullivan either. I tried.
Tom Miller, Millford Township, I have a concern about amending for greater density, because part of the lifeblood of our economy is, our local economy is obviously eco-tourism, you know, with hunters and fishermen and hikers and leap peepers, canoe. You know, with hunters and fishermen and hikers and leap peepers, canoeists, kayakers, bird watchers, et cetera, et cetera.
Fishermen, too. Is that it?
I think I said. And, you know, these guys are pumping money into places like outdoor, you know, like Pike County Outfitters, Silver Birch Archery, Patriot Arms, Clearview Tactical, Action Bikes, Kidatini Canoes, Helm's Gas Station, Turkey Hill, Shell, all our BNB's, Meyer, Fairbridge, the Fochaire, the Demic Naked Bagel, Apple Valley, Joey's, Johns Arthur Avenue, Chang Mao, Kidatini Canoes. And I kind of looked into just how much this tourism can provide, and I looked at one, one example in Pennsylvania, and that's Hawk Mountain. You guys know where that is? Just follow the Kidatini Ridge down to where Cabela's is. It's right there. And a guy named Paul Curlinger did a study there, and this is just bird watchers for the town of Orwigsburg, Pennsylvania. A little town like Milford, actually. Really where my family is from. And in 1990, between 1990 and 1991, bird watchers alone pumped 1.5 million into that local economy. He did a further study on Cape May, same demographic, and that was 10 million. So, on my way going past the Santos Farm today to pick up my son at school, a guy was running his German shorthair. And there's not much more beautiful sight than a guy running a dog like that in a field. And I think that's what these people come here to see. The beauty of our county is, is something I think we need to preserve, and something like a farm that's been there since 1820. I, I just think a field full of apartments is, is not something that we've all been raised with here, and, and I think it would change the character of our community. That's my concern. Thank you.
Erica Burnett, Milford, Westfall Township. I brought up at the Supervisors' meeting, the point that working on our comprehensive plan with Milford Borough and other municipalities allows us to access grants, to have professionals come and help us work through these things, that this is such a big change for our community, and I'm not sure it's the change in the right direction. I'm looking at you guys tonight, and I don't see the leadership that makes me feel good about where we're going in the future. I feel like the gas pedal is ready to be, you know, the acceleration is, here we go, and we're going to lose the community that we have. We're all here for a reason. We don't live in Stroudsburg, we don't live in Middletown, we don't want that for our community. We're a small historic district in the borough, and we have our open spaces here. I think it's important that we talk about it and not say, oh, that's something we should talk about in the future, and maybe for a later meeting when big deals like this are being pushed through. Once that space is gone, it's gone. And I just don't like the leadership that I'm seeing. I think that, I don't really see discussions, I see kind of staring off into space, thumbing through pages, okay, they said that, let's take that and push it through. I believe Bob, you know, had brought up earlier on about the, what was he talking about? The impact fees. So, I don't know if that was ever discussed before in the past, you know? He brought it up, and it was just like, mm, okay, glossed over, and here we go, the amendment's going through.
Like we mentioned before, we can't discuss it unless it's given to us by the Supervisors to look at.
So again, we've talked in the past, it seems like, oh, the Supervisor said 100 units, that's what we have to work with, because that's what they said. I feel like you guys, why are you here if you can't discuss or do anything without the Supervisors telling you? I don't.
I mean, is this a workshop meeting?
No, it's an actual meeting meeting.
But even at a workshop meeting, the same thing happens. There's public participation at the end with no give and take, really. You listen to our comments, but we're not a part of your process, which we should be.
I don't even see a process, but I guess it's scary.
I don't know about anybody else sitting up here, but I do take notes for references, so, and.
Right. But isn't a workshop a give and take? I mean, we sit here like stone statues until public participation, and then you listen to our comments, and I have to say you're very respectful to us, so we appreciate that. But we're not part of the process, which everything I've ever read is, planning board Supervisors are working for the residents of the area, and we don't, you say you're working for us, but we're not part of the participation, and that's what's frustrating here.
On the last workshop, everybody genuinely wanted the participation, but we had nothing in front of us that we could even discuss in the last workshop. We had too many questions for Tony.
We had fireworks ordinance and special events.
Right.
But do you see what we're saying here? You've been to enough meetings already, right? You know what I'm saying? You know, we participate in public comments and we're vocal, but we don't help you guys, we're not part of the process.
Actually, you're, we, last meeting, we had no questions.
Why would we feel like?
I go, I should come join us.
I put my letter in, nobody said a word.
I can't comment on workshops, because I can't be there.
That's what I was going to ask you. Can you be at a workshop? We have questions.
You scheduled them on a day I can't be here, so.
Can we move it? So he can be.
Listen, I represent Borough, they won't move their meetings, so I mean.
I wouldn't guess moving it at all.
No.
I got no problem with that either.
Yeah. If you move your workshop meeting to a Wednesday night, I'd be happy to come to.
I'd like to make a motion to do our meetings on a Wednesday night at the convenience of our solicitor.
If you want to do it the first Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday.
So you can do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move our workshop meetings to the first Wednesday when our solicitor is available.
Monday night was picked, even though I said I can't be there on Monday night. So if you want me to be there, I'll be happy to be there, but you have to do it on a meeting on a night that I can be here.
Well, it's a little hard.
We will leave questions with you.
All in favor?
All right. Okay.
And that's going to start when?
Got that? Next month.
Next month? The first Wednesday.
Greg was out here.
Greg Luthy, Milford Borough. And I, just a comment, because it's been brought up a lot, and I've been to quite a few of these meetings, that this is the multi-use and passing it, and there's been a lot of comparison to, well, they did it in Westfall, and that was great development, and I just caution that, and I would encourage you guys, as I did, ride through Westfall, and, or ride through the entrance to Mattamores. You know, I don't smoke, and I don't like fireworks, so the place is useless to me.
You still go to Wolver Bear, right?
Still go to Wolver Bear.
There's a reason why those.
You guys, you guys, the same as me, were born and raised here, but you know, this is, and I hope I die here.
There's a reason why those, those stores are targeted for that area, because it's so close to the border.
I understand that, but what I'm getting to is that, go through the, go through the mall, 60% of it is vacant.
Yes.
And it's going to get more vacant, and it's going to become a big shell, and maybe this whole glossy models and things like that, and we can say to Wilbur in the face that this hasn't been the suggestion of one particular project, but we all know it is.
Which mall?
And, what's that?
Westfall.
It's lost all of its major stores, it's got two small stores, and there's a couple more that are ready to move out, and even movie theaters struggling, that pulls out. You've got a shell there that could be used for nothing.
Have you been over to Galleria in Middletown lately?
Same thing, you know? So you're, what we're looking at here is a, is a passe type of development. I mean, we could sit here with the idea of putting up this mall in the front, some rental buildings, and you can't convince me that this area needs a lot of rental properties. But we have to look to the future of, what is the future? And I was hoping Mike Sullivan was here, because I read a lot of his articles, and he's all about jobs. And he was quoted as saying, putting in more residential units is an expense. Putting in commercial development is a revenue source to a county. So, this is just the floodgates of opening up to a lot more resident, we have 26,000 undeveloped lots here. There's plenty of room for people to build and live here. I just caution that this is a huge decision for you guys, and I actually see a little bit more interest here than I have at the Supervisors' meeting. But this is such a big decision that these little things, like impact fees, and talking to the fire departments, and listening to the, these are things that you just can't kind of glaze over and say, let's worry about that later, because we could end up with a lot of empty buildings here that then become our problem. And I'm just, you know, cautioning that, I'm hoping everyone's taking this very seriously and thinking very much about it. I mean, I, I work in Orange County, I commute every day, and the comment was made to me, a lot of people are moving here from Orange County and Monroe, and people commute to have to work. There's a reason they commute, because they want to live here. I can afford to live in Orange County, there's no way I would live there. You know why? Because they pass this through. It's nothing but cluster housing. Monroe, I have clients, doctors from Crystal Run have moved to Warwick, sold their house for half of what they bought it for because of the high-density housing. So, the property values are going to change here, and again, this is the floodgates. This is just the beginning, and it's one project, but it's a significant project, and that's my comment.
Just let me respond a second. We all grew up here, we all fished in and marved.
Yeah.
You know, we all saw the developments going, and we're all fully, pretty much aware, those of us that have been here for any length of time, like since birth, Milford has always been a bedroom community, if you wanted to make real, real good money, unless you've had a business running town. You know that as well as I do. I commuted through New York and down in Jersey, and just like, you know, we do the shuffle every day. And we also know when Fox Island went in, that's couldn't stay clean and green, in my opinion, the only thing out of that dam outside of seeing friends and family get screwed out of their property was in fact that that would be condos up and down between here and Stroudsburg. I think that.
Well, my family lost a cabin.
Right.
In eminent domain, but I still think it's the best thing that ever happened to the area. And I'm not saying that.
Well, let's think anyways.
I'm not saying that there should be no development, I'm just saying that smart development, thought-out development, and, you know, it's changing, the environment is changing everywhere, so to.
Should be open to moderate development.
I am. I mean, I'm not against that, I'm just, I just think the high density, and that's all we're really talking about, is this zoning change for high density, is opening up the floodgates of more people with less revenue, and it's, it's not like if we bring the people, then the businesses will come. I mean, look at Sullivan County, you know, they built this casino, that place is out of business in three years, and they're going to have to operate under bankruptcy this day or three years. So, and they can't get anyone to work there. So I just say that people, the comment is always that people have to commute. Well, they, they choose to commute because of the way of life here. You change the way of life here, you aren't going to commute. They'll stay in Jersey, or they'll stay in Middletown, and, you know, if it's going to be the same over there, they'll live there and work next door, so, you know. I know, again, I'm the same as you, I hunt, I fish, you know, I want my kids to live here, but I want them to live here, and I'm not against, I'm not against growth, I'm just against.
You got to say that. We do have a lot of unbuilt new land between federal lands, state game lands, excess slopes, waterways, wetlands, there will always, always be.
Sure.
With more, they just did with the bridge preserve.
And, and that's the beauty of it, and I'm not disputing that, and, but that's the beauty of the area, is our undeveloped land. I'm just saying that this area, from here to there, is not the place to have this type of development, or smart development.
Well, yet you're, you're all good with moderate development.
I am all good with moderate development.
First one, Nancy, how about a friend?
Yeah, we never, we, no one in here has ever said, don't develop, or, you know, that's it. But the two great ones, I mean.
I'm saying.
The only thing we've ever heard back, the only thing we've ever heard back is, 100 units, mixed development, that's it. It's all right. When Mr. DeSantis was at the last Supervisors' meeting, he closed the meeting with, this is what's happening everywhere. Is it, it's like, oh my God, really? Well, I don't see it here, I don't want it here. You know what I mean? I came from Long Island, I, you know, it's just like what you were talking about. The reason we moved from there is because of this place, the first time we ever came here, we're like, oh my God, this is it. This is where we want to stay, this is beautiful.
Sure seen it in the Savages in the 60s, man.
Yeah, but so you know what happened? So we got here last December, and in January, it's like, you're changing the zoning. I thought it was a midnight zone, exactly. But now, just to dovetail onto all of this, there was a great article in the Pokey Nose Record, and it's Leam and Township seeking input on quality of life for residents. So, they're doing their new comprehensive plan, and they're going about it like this. Sorry, can you put it up?
No, I'm trying to get a paper.
No, no, no. Right, and then they hired an outside firm to come in and ask their residents, what do you see as your quality of life going forward? What do you want? We want to work with you, not just keep talking about 100 apartments or anything else. Mr. Magnotta, you have a copy? No, I don't, I'm sorry. You know? That's all right, Fred, I'll, I'll. We have an extra, that's okay. It's also online. Thanks, Fred. But I mean, this, this is, was, kind of was my expectation, you know, when I started attending the Township meetings, the Supervisors' meetings, and these meetings, and what I found was nothing. Nothing coming back. No matter what points we made, no matter what we had to say, we're still looking at 100 apartments and a strip mall. Yeah.
What would you consider high density? Like population density?
To me, and I've said this a couple of times, when I look at the prime meats mall with 22 townhouses and a, and a nice store that anchors something, that's not an eye sore.
That would be.
I'd be home watching the Wheel of Fortune right now.
Okay. That's a beating, dude.
He's been insisting we're conscious.
You got something for us?
No, I mean, Mr. Webb was being consistent, the condos were there.
Tony. I just wanted to ask Fred a question. You, what would you say is the density of Pike County, the population density?
I think Mr. Seacrest had some number of, like, I don't know, very specifically on my, whatever you had.
Without quoting me, give me about a 10, 20, give me a 10% margin? Is that fair? 105?
105.
Just that ballpark.
Right.
What do you think it is for Milford Township?
I don't know.
About 115, 120 maybe?
Right.
How about the Borough of Milford?
Borough of Milford is a completely different entity. I said urban area.
It's density. It's right next door.
Wait, Larry.
It's a fair question.
No, it's not really.
To that, to that. That was also, it's interesting, I mean, you know, vice don't figure, figures online. But, so Mr. Seacrest was very clever with his use of numbers, and it was been brought up a couple of times by some of us, that Erica, John, that he's looking at numbers like, okay, this density, this, you know, this sparse, this, this, whatever, and this will get us back to 2015 levels if we do this, and you get these 100 apartments, but he neglected to mention was, that, okay, now you're back to Pike County, to those 2015 levels, but you're doing it at 2.2% of the area. That's crazy.
Okay, anyway, about 1,600, I would guess for the Borough. And I know we're comparing apples to oranges. That's like saying, your reference to Milford is an urban area, or whatever, I mean, that's like comparing Sullivan County, New York, to Manhattan, really, we're right next to each other.
Yeah, but this would be like.
So what do we have to be right there?
Density.
No, no.
You can look at it that way, but you could also look at it as, if we do this, and every possible thing happened to create this, you're, you're going to quadruple possibly the density of Milford Township alone, possibly, possibly, possibly.
And, and going back.
I would probably. And it's based on, it's based on some of this stuff.
You had a question.
What brought this up with Penny and also for me? I've had some comments from other property owners that have little less than 20 acres about taking us to court if this ordinance passes. And is there a possibility that they would be able to do it on a smaller scale because of the ordinance?
It's called the Fair Share Act.
There's always a possibility, Bob.
About that, I kinda know that, but I wanted to hear.
Or probably.
Always a possibility.
Everything goes to Tony.
Right.
So, I mean, even if we're looking at.
Anybody can sue for anything, you know? Whether or not they're gonna be successful is difficult.
It depends on the courts. But there's a possibility they could be successful.
Anything's possible. I like to deal with probability.
Wow. We can say that.
Very soon.
Which is, I wanted everybody to know, that's the reason we started this.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we wanted to look at opening it up on a, on a smaller scale.
Correct.
And having it accessible to everybody.
In the DD zone.
Because we do, we never, you know, we don't have a mixed use right now. We do have it in the area, how it got here is.
All right, well, again, that's, again, I agree, there's mixed use in the area. How it got approved, I don't know. It's before my time, but.
Yes.
There are mixed uses in this township, even though the zoning prohibits it.
Right. That's why I was saying that there had to be some mixed use at some point, but it's not.
Nope, never did, I, I've gone back.
So looking at the point that.
1986.
Already have it, which would probably fall under what doctrine of the Lachiz, right? So we have it on a small scale. And now if we're gonna allow it on a big scale, we're leaving out the.
But Bob, you're, you're not talking about in all the commercial zones. You're just talking about in the DD district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just in the DD district. The same, the same where we're putting the mixed use now. And that was, that was the, they thought of doing it on a slightly smaller scale.
And also not tailoring it to 30,000 square feet.
Right. And that, that's out the window. We just, we already have, we already have uses here that take no less. So we have, we had to figure it out. That's kind of what I was. One of the people is the same person. That's why we wanted to take a look at. Think this is a possibility? It's a possibility.
And I, and I think she should bring it up with.
Uh, that's what I told her. All right, I just wanted to, I put it on this.
Thank you, Bob.
I have two short points. First, I'm, I'm impressed with the willingness to have an open discussion of this group. And I wish that happened more in the supervisor's meeting where you're willing to consider alternate proposals. The second thing, just for correcting the record, Mr. Magnata was adamant that he didn't wanna be misquoted about informing the code enforcement officer. I just went back and listened to the video from the August 19th meeting, 11 minutes and 16 seconds in regarding that specific sign. Your quote was, we'll inform the code enforcement officer.
Right, and I followed up by saying that he's here every Monday.
Nope, that was this most recent meeting. That was the September meeting.
Oh, I'm only talking about the most recent.
Right, I'm saying you informed this group that on August 19th, that you informed the code enforcement officer.
An idea.
So in terms of correcting the record.
And I did, you can ask it.
Okay. So you, you wanted to be correctly quoted and I just wanna make sure that you are.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it. And I did say at the last meeting, so, so we're on the same wavelength, that you can see him on Monday when he's here regarding this.
Right, which, which meant that you didn't contact him the first time. Is that correct or no?
No, I did mention to him about this.
Okay.
That's why you went and said something about getting a.
Release form.
Release, yeah, now the.
Authorization.
Authorization.
I think he's out there writing, taking a sign down.
As it is.
Excellent. I'll table it. I'll table it till next time. Erica?
I just, I hate how you guys always go, well, the borough does this and we, you know, that is a downtown area. That's like the center of town. That is where it, it should be dense, or, you know? And I just hate, it's like a pissing match. Well, they have this, we should have that, you know? They have this.
The county as a whole, you have rural areas like Little Real World, like maybe out in Blooming Grove or.
And if you look at, if you look at the. The.
That's out there. Oh, that's out there.
Plan. The joint municipal plan.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive plan, thank you.
The one that nobody ever signed on yet.
Well, I mean.
It's a good guideline, it is. It's a pretty good read.
It seems like it was written with a purpose and that it has absolutely no meaning to anybody anymore. And, you know, when we were at the meeting in Melford Township, when Mr. R, is that what we were calling him?
Ted Resnick.
When Mr. Resnick came and spoke with us, you know, Pennsylvania has a plan for their municipalities. Now, there's no legal fight behind that, but.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline that I feel like's not even being.
When you read our municipal, joint municipal plan, what was it, dated 86 or whatever? Or 96 or whatever?
2005. 2005.
Oh, six. 2006.
That's one of the.
I'm bad with numbers.
Yeah, no worries.
When you read that, did you ever notice any contradictions?
There were some, but it's supposed to be updated. And when you look at it, the purpose or, you know, the point I feel that they were trying to make was that we would like to preserve the downtown area and have this, and then Melford Township is this. But I just feel like.
Give us a report.
You say, oh, they're guidelines, but I don't think you guys are anywhere near them.
Okay. Well, we try. We're new, you guys are new.
If you ask me, if you ask me, it's far too long to, to entail. It should just give a general overview of, of what, what we want.
Thank you.
Well, I think people in the past had a vision for our future. And I feel like that's why we are here, because we also have a vision for our future where we're gonna be living and recreating and shopping and working and, I feel like we have.
That's where it should just say, we want recreational areas. Then we have meetings about it. People should be putting their input in as to where, what. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be a document that locks itself in time. It should be a document that.
Right, well, then. Well, then here we come to these meetings and, you know, I don't feel like there's been that bad info.
Oh, come on, we're being good.
Oh, you are, you're listening, but I don't know if you're acting.
No, I'm dead serious, I don't act. I wanted to be a rock star, not the movie star.
Just to that point, and I said it plenty of times, but you need to update the document and it doesn't need to sit on the shelf. And updating the document in any fashion that you wanna do that, with any amount of help that you wanna do that with, will shed light on all of that that we're talking about. And it will be where you wanna take it, you know? So it's not a plan that's in the past that, yes, because they, they are supposed to update it every 10 years for this very reason, so that there's, you know, new light shed on it, new thoughts, and, and it's, and, and yes, I agree. The old document may be too long, but there needs to be a new one so that this process has a better vetting process than, you know, we're new and we have it and we can, let's just, this is, we're not ready for this. So I think go through a little bit of the steps that that would require you go through to figure out what we, as a community, you as Melford Township residents, think is appropriate.
Hey, Tony, as far as, we wanted to get started on the comprehensive plan anyway.
We start.
Do we need, do we need to make a motion to have somebody send a letter or recommend to the supervisors that when we need help, have a planner company?
You can make any request to the supervisors that you want.
Just because we need a whack.
Oh, no, I mean, I think we should have somebody that's a professional in the area of comprehensive plans.
Make a motion then.
I would make a motion that we ask the supervisors to allow us to get somebody.
Hire a planner.
To hire a planner.
For the comprehensive.
For the comprehensive plan to work with us as needed. Paul Seater here.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
So we're gonna leave that up to you, Bob, to handle that, okay?
Fine.
20 acre parcels and more should be recreational.
I would. I have one question. I would request that I will ask motion that the planning commission, request the planning commission secretary to send the letter and the words that I have at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Not have to wait.
All right, would you like to amend your motion? I'll amend the motion that add to it, that Shahan sent a letter to the supervisors, reiterating our responses.